Hi. Hey, everyone, how's it going? How are you? Hi. Hi, hi, how are you guys? Hi. I saw you all. Hey, Mommy. Paula. How are you, Paula? I'm good. Open my eyes. I can't see. Why do we do this? Open my eyes. Oh, look at you. Y'all, y'all. Oh, y'all, what's going on? Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Freddy?
Here.
Mr. Bitman?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Wiley?
All right. Five will turn the room. Mr. Quagliano has not been called and Mrs. Wiley is not present. We move on if we are ready for our on the pledge of allegiance. Have a special Olympics team, the Huntley Hurricanes, that's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, we've got you both in. Oh, we've got this. Hi. Who's there?
I love the Indians. You know that. I like America. And you're really hot. We're really handsome. We're nice. We're awesome. There you go. There you go. There you go.
Where is it? Oh, my God.
Good job. Thank you guys so much. I'm Carly.
Good job.
I am part of our new Special Olympics team.
There you go.
The 58th Huntley Hurricanes. And then this is Coach Jennifer Slade. She's the assistant coach. We have a couple of our athletes here today. There are eight on our team. We're all from Marlowe Middle School. And we've been training for the last month or so. And we have about one month left until our region meet, which will be athletes from all over McHenry, Northern Lake and Cook, or Northern Cook and Lake County. So there's a lot of athletes that'll be there. And we're just excited. We're having fun and the kids are doing amazing. So I'll let them come say their names to let you guys know who they are. My name is Gabby.
My name is Baguio. Yeah, baby.
My name is Charlie Middleton.
My name is Isaac.
My name is Luke.
Thank you guys so much. Hi, that's now we did everybody.
Yeah.
We have some flyers.
That would be way good. Hey, Mommy. I did it. See, bugger. See me, Cam. Fun. See me. See me. See you, Dad. Yeah, baby, do it. Come on. Yeah, baby. Oh, yeah. See me, Cam. Everybody.
It's the thing, we have fun, everybody.
Thank you so much. I forgot to say too that we do have a spirit wear store open. So there's two flyers right up here. And if you need it, you can email somebody and they'll get you the link because it's spirit wear. What event are we practicing for? What are we... So we have a combination. We have a couple of our athletes. Half our team are doing the 50 meter dash run. And then the other half of our team are doing the full 100 meter dash run. And then all of us are doing the softball throw. We can't wait to hear all about it. Yeah, it'll be fun.
Yeah, it would be so fun, you guys.
This is a great event for our district. Standing what we've added here. I think it was Aaron inspired and this week we have some staff who have some experience with this who came in and developed it. So it's a great new thing. I had the pleasure of watching them practice. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to number three, student recognition.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Dr. Marcus Beal, principal at Huntley High School. I'm here to recognize three of our national merit finalists who participated in national merit. National merit is through the PSAT NMSA. National merit is through the PSAT NMSPT, students receive recognition kind of on a number of different levels. Being a finalist is the top level out of, I believe, about 15,000 students that is narrowed down from across the country. And so to have three of our own receive this recognition and based on their scores on the NMSPT and PSAT. So it's great to be able to be here to recognize them, have them come up, kind of introduce themselves. And just really quickly, a little bit about just their time at Huntley, kind of some of the successes that they've had. So we'll have Evan Gobieski.
Hi, I'm Evan. My professor, my teacher. Okay. So my time at Huntley, I think, has just been a lot of me trying to develop into the best student I can be. And a lot of that has been setting very high bars for myself. And the PSAT and the FAT were two things that I was extremely stressed about because of the bar I set. And I'm really happy to have done as well as I did and be here today.
Next, we have Joshua Thorsonson.
My time at Huntley has been pretty good. I'm pretty involved in the program. It's been like the highest. But, you know, I was a new student. That's something I'm happy about. Also, I've put in a lot of hard work over the years. A lot of that's been through the help of my parents.
Good job.
And last, we have James Barker.
Hi, I'm James Barker. I'm an engineering department at the school and chess team math team. I just like taking my jake.
Right now.
Make sure before they sit down.
Oh, yeah. Talked about the parade. So how does you all want to go on up? Then we'll take a picture.
Ralph, sorry guys. Doctor Bealan, will you also be doing speech or do we have?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. It's the background.
Really quickly, I'm going to call up Max Green, who is our speech coach. And a little bit just about Max. Max is definitely one of those who are very passionate about speech and really trying to. He took over after Tom George, who has been our speech coach for a very long time. And just his passion and the work that he does for our young people and just being the biggest cheerleader for them and their success has just been awesome. So I'm going to have Max come on up and do the presentation for the speech team.
Good evening, members of the board. As Dr. Bealan said, my name is Max Green and I'm the head coach of the speech team at Huntley High School. And tonight, I'm here to recognize Ava Burns. Ava has competed for the HHS speech team for four years. I want you to think about that for a moment. You all remember what it was like four years ago. Imagine trying to learn how to compete on a speech team under those circumstances. It was entirely on Zoom. It was not fun. And yet, here's Ava, four years later, as a two-time team captain and a state medalist. Choosing a captain for the speech team can be a very challenging proposition. Not only do your captains get to read the morning announcements every day over the intercom, but they have to set the tone for the entire team. They have to be the hardest worker, the most committed competitor. Oh, yeah. They have to be good. Not just bad on the back end. I'm talking about consistently finishing in the top six in their event at tournaments across the season. Choosing Ava to serve as one of my team captains was one of the easiest decisions I've ever had to make as the head coach of the speech team. It was obvious from the moment I met Ava that she was destined for great success. Even as a sophomore, Ava was already one of the most mature members of the speech team. She was also warm, friendly, and extremely courteous. It didn't hurt that she was earning medals at tournaments after being on the team for just one year. Throughout her speech team career, Ava has competed in events such as original oratory, prose reading, and dramatic duet acting. But her primary event has always been radio speaking. In radio speaking, students are given 45 minutes to cut a packet of news articles, sports scores, weather statistics, and a commercial into a five-minute radio broadcast. Radio speaking is an extremely challenging event because if students are under or over the time limit, they are automatically disqualified. Ava upped her game this year by writing three different broadcast sign-offs on all of her scripts so that she could pivot in real time in order to meet district's time requirement. Now let's talk about Ava's accomplishments this season. Ava earned a fourth place finish in the next in finals for radio speaking at DeKalb High School. Then, several weeks later, she earned a second place finish in prose reading and a second place finish in radio speaking at South Elgin High School. Then, in one of the most heartwarming moments of our entire speech team season, Ava earned a first place finish in radio speaking at our last tournament of the regular season at Glundrup North High School. The first time in four years, Ava had finally earned the title of tournament champion. I wish you all could have been there to hear her broadcast and especially her performance of the commercial, her sleepy time tea. It was magnificent. In the first round of the state series, Ava breezed through regionals with a first place finish in radio speaking at Grant Community High School. In the second round of the state series, Ava finished in third place at sectionals in radio speaking, which punched her ticket to the state tournament in Peoria. And finally, to end her high school speech team career, Ava became the first student in HHS history to earn a medal in radio speaking at the IHSA State Speech Tournament when she finished in seventh place. Ava?
I'm so very proud of you. You represent the very best of all the students who have come to the state. I couldn't be more proud and honored to have served as your coach the last three years. Had spectacular career and I wish you the best.
Can I just say, this clearly translates into your role of the play that you just did. I was so impressed with you and we're new and I'm new and I don't know all the students. And so when I saw you, I was like, holy cow. I told Andy, I'm like, we're going to be hearing her name for a very long time. So hearing all this really set the stage nicely for you to be in the play. You did fantastic. I mean, everybody did. I so enjoyed that, but I just wanted to mention that. Good job. Thank you.
We've got a microphone here. I'm glad to surrender five minutes. What's your next question?
Hopefully, hopefully, we're going to be catching. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Doctor Bealan, you going to jump in there?
All right. With that, I'm going to jump in and hand it over to Ms. Lombard, who's going to make a couple of comments.
Before we head into public comments on the rest of our agenda, I'd like us to take a moment of silence for the passing of one of our students this past Monday evening. Jared Morrison was a 12th grade student who's been in District 158 since kindergarten. His personality, his work ethic, and the love of his family and friends will forever be part of our Huntley 158 family. I ask that you keep his family, loved ones, and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And if we could take a moment of silence.
Moving on to number four, public comments. I don't see any, but there's no public comments. So we will move on to number five, revision and adoption of the agenda. I have one suggested change, which is to remove number 15, the closed session. Move that to next week. We've got a meeting next week to open behind any of the topics related to that. If there's any other changes? With that, I will make a motion to accept the, adopt the agenda as noted without number 15, the closed session. A second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Craddy. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Our best, the motion passes and we move on with the adoption of the agenda. So with that, we'll move to number six, curriculum and instruction committee. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Dr. McCrindell, if you could please give us a report.
All right. Good evening. So this evening, I did go ahead and attach the updates in memo form with some more in-depth information. So I wanted to quickly highlight some of those key points. And then if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those. We're in the middle of our five essentials survey right now. We really need our families to participate in that. We do report, if we receive 20% of our families filling that out, it does be reported on our state report cards. Our buildings are currently working with our students who take it in 4th through 12th grade and getting those students to get their input in. That does go into our actual accountability score as a part of it. And so if you guys could help us out, get some, go ahead and take that. We care about the feedback. We care about trying to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our families and it's one way to show that. And so as of, I should have looked right before I came. I didn't think about that. But on 3/11, we were at 12% of our families and we need to aim for at least 20% district-wide. Each building does have to hit that percentage on their own in order to get a report. So just letting you know that that's going on currently. A couple others, I just kind of had a multilingual update. We are working towards our KPI 2.01, which is our multilingual program review. And we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago that in addition to providing a survey to our multilingual families, which includes families who have EL, English learner families, as well as those families that are a part of our dual language program. They were able to write feedback via that survey. We had about 67 families participate in the dual language survey and a handful of our EL learners. Families went ahead and participated in that. We did a follow-up meeting two weeks ago in person to gather some additional feedback and it was well-attended. About 70, 50 to 70 people were in the room. It was, we organized a discussion similar to how the PTEC has been running where it was around four themes that came from the survey. Families were able to get feedback on those four themes. And then at the end of the meeting, we did break out and because our EL families have different feedback than our dual language families and there are some EL families in our dual language group too. They were able to provide me additional feedback that they weren't able to share at the time of those four key themes. So we felt that Ms. Lombard was there as well as myself and Ms. Ponto Jordan. We collected that and we're going to have a string of follow-up meetings in the next week to explain some of the questions that kind of came up. And we'll provide a full update to you guys in April on that KPI. Literacy plan update, that's another one of our KPIs. In January, Ms. Mohn shared and Mr. Truax about our literacy plan and the update that we've been doing so far. We do have that approved literacy plan from Illinois. At the K5 level, our teachers did take a survey where they were able to analyze the resources that we have currently compared to are they meeting the needs of the Illinois literacy plan? We used the survey that is the uses as well as Ed Reports to be able to gather their feedback. And we were not surprised by some of the feedback. There were some gaps in the material that we have at the elementary level. What came out was with writing, they wanted some more support with writing, vocabulary. And then the fact that they wanted to make sure that it's an evidence-based curriculum, which means that it's something that has embedded through experts, has gone through that criteria, et cetera. So from that, we went ahead and took a look at the resource that we're currently using. We use different pieces of this one resource that was not created until recently. They just revised it and they've upgraded it to a more comprehensive tool that includes all those components. And so we're currently using pieces of that. And so the teachers at the elementary level that were in that group that have given that feedback are wanting to take a look at that resource a little more in depth. And so we're going to bring a team in to look at it and see if it might answer some other questions. We don't want to overwhelm or we also want to be supportive and we don't want to make a major change. But we are concerned that we want to make sure and meet the needs of the writing and the vocabulary part of the literacy plan. And so that meeting is happening this next week to take a look at that. And we'll provide an update to you guys as we kind of go through that process. At the 612 level, they continue to do some work. A survey was been out to their staff as well and we'll have that update to you guys in May with that KPI. We're super excited to highlight this partnership with First Institute of Crystal Lake. A huge shout out to Ms. Renee St. Clair for setting this up, her hard work that she does over at the high school and Mr. Doctor Bealan's support. But we're agreeing to do an exclusive partnership between us and them where our seniors are able to earn credits that they take here at the high school towards their medical assistance certification there. So we have had some of that dual credit with some universities, but now with an actual, with First Institute, that's a great new opportunity. So again, a huge thank you to Ms. Renee St. Clair for that and her passion and pushing through on that. And that is all I was going to update unless you have some additional questions.
Does anyone from the committee have any other questions for Dr. McCrindell? The board? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Item 6.2, materials for Huntley High School courses for next school year. Some of these were topics that we discussed last fall. If you could bring us up to date on that, please.
Absolutely. So last fall, you approved courses that we could offer in our course catalog. Students have just finished their course registration process and we don't know if we're actually running these courses yet. But a part of that is we want to select materials that align to those. And so we provided the material that will align to astronomy, planetary science. astronomy, interstellar science, AP chemistry, and Guitar I on here. Our process is when we adopt a new curriculum, we have to, we present it to you guys. We have it on review for families and anyone in the community to look at for the next 30 days. And then because of the way the meetings line up, we'll do official approval of this one in April at the regular board meeting. And so this is just informing you that these are the ones that have been selected. Anyone is welcome to reach out to Mr. Truax, our Director of Curriculum, for secondary or myself, and we'll set up time for them to peruse the resources at any point.
Great. Committee members have any additional questions?
I just have a comment from the board that on the astronomy class, we are missing the opportunity to have that class during the eclipse and the aligning of the planets. It's kind of a missing thing, but maybe in the next 70 years.
Well, Mr. Burton, I'm glad you brought it up. We did go ahead and purchase eclipse glasses for all of our students. And we're going to be announcing that to our families, and that's coming up in the April, the eighth, I believe. You know the date? Thank you, I think it's there. We do have that, so students will be able to go outside. As long as families will come to a thought, they'll be able to reach out to their teacher or principal to have them stay inside and be at least able to observe it. Our teachers are going to put a little bit of a lesson around it, just to make sure there's a context around it. But it's a once-in-a-lifetime experience.
And I know it would count against chronic acetatism, but I know some people might say that gives that the drive down to be in the center of the eclipse. It's kind of an interesting one.
It is, yep.
Thank you very much.
That, we'll move to number seven, the Special Education Committee. Wiley is not here, she's on vacation. Can I throw it at you now, Murray, to start us off?
Sure. Go right ahead.
All right, stand her up. I am super excited. Obviously, special education, such positive energy around that. Thank you so much for supporting. Since we had our last board meeting, we've had the opportunity to bring our self-contained teachers to the district office to do some work around our curriculum review and our continuum of service review. We've also had an opportunity to bring our paraprofessionals to the district office. We had almost 90 of them here last week, and we had the opportunity to both thank them and get some input from paraprofessionals about what it is they're needing to support the work we're doing in special education. And it was a really great opportunity. And in addition to that, spending a lot of time observing, walking through, having conversations with our special educators across the district, one of whom I am invited, I invited tonight, Maggie Hoffman. I'm going to have her step up, and I'm very happy to introduce her to all of you. So we do a lot of work in special education around inclusion and recognize that the lift is really all of ours to share together. When we have meaningful and purposeful inclusion, it means all students in our district have a community. And had a wonderful opportunity to have a conversation with Maggie about some of the things she's doing in her classroom. I will let her speak to all of it, but I do want to share a little bit about Maggie, because I do think it's important for us to recognize just the experts we have in our district. And Maggie is among many of them. Maggie is in the district for the 10th year. She taught in all three of our self-contained classrooms, SES, Math, Strategy Ed. She did a year in COOTAS. And really credits her mom for the work she's doing in special education, where she had to learn how to support her mom to do some things differently than she once had. And Maggie says, "I believe my students can do anything as long as we adapt it to their abilities. My favorite part of my job is watching my students grow. From potty training to using supplies correctly, the last three years, I've seen the most gains in my students academically and socially." She didn't include that she was the 2023 McHenry County Elementary Educator of the Year, but I thought bringing that in there might be important to all of you, I don't know. So I am grateful to you for being here, and I'm excited for you to share. So thank you.
While she's doing that, I want to thank all of you and all of my principals who have been there, who are being through it all. They have always supported anything and everything, any idea I've had, they've supported it fully. My most recent idea is, we call it purposeful inclusion, reverse inclusion, maybe even true inclusion. There we go. Okay, so this year, the real reason I looked into reverse inclusion is due to the challenges that I'm seeing in my students. They face, that they're facing going into that general education and following the general education curriculum. They're getting frustrated, they're asking for breaks, they're unable to attend that general education curriculum at the pace that it's going in. And my aides are doing a lot of hand-over-hand support to finish our project, to just help them be in there for those 30 minutes. So what I wanted to do was wonder, what is the purpose of my students going in there? What can we do for them? And I was talking to DeeDee, and her and I decided, you know, she gave me some great words, and I'm going to read them for us. "When we do inclusion well, we create a community where meaningful shared learning experiences between all students are in the norm. This requires that we build capacity in all our educators, students, families, and community members. Inclusion is a shared commitment to our students with disabilities and our students who are non-disabled. This is it so they can understand each other and grow in our community. When we capture, create, and leverage opportunities for all students to engage with each other in meaningful ways, we are creating the art of human connection, which is undoubtedly the heart of inclusion. This led me to think, how can I provide a purposeful inclusion opportunity for all my students based on their individual needs? There's many ways we can do it. We can do it in inclusion in the classroom. A shift I made in the last few years is truly looking at the strengths of my students. When we look at inclusion opportunities for our students, we need to make it very individualized to the student and their abilities. We have students who go to our general education classrooms during various different times, but it's once again, it's based on their strengths. We have students who go for reading, writing, math, SFL, naptime, specials, and choice time. Here are some pictures of the students inside the general classroom. We have first-grade students doing choice time, where they're playing with the cards or doing art activities. My most favorite was this Tuesday, the second graders had their concert, and we had dancing, and you can't really tell which kids are disabled or non-disabled. It's so awesome to see that our abilities can shine. The other kind of inclusion is it's a true inclusion. This year, Mrs. Jones, our occupational therapist, and I started doing what I call reverse inclusion with our second-grade peer buddy from Mrs. Kane's class. Mrs. Kane's students volunteer third time for choice time to come to my classroom to spend time with my students. This environment is the environment my students are used to. Smaller settings, less things, what they're comfortable with. Mrs. Kane sends three to four students to my room, and we work on things. At the beginning of the 2023, or 23, 24 school year, we supported the second-grade students. We told them what our students could do, what strategies to use with our students. We equipped them to build relationships with our students. During this time, we work on communication, motor, and social skills. We needed to prepare them and equip the second-grade peers to understand our students. But during that time, we also helped our students understand Mrs. Kane's friends. The most rewarding part of our small communities that started in my small classroom has led to students asking to sit by our students in the lunchroom. And having them play tag outside, and it's their choice to come play tag with my friends. The best thing is the invite to the birthday parties. They're all getting them. They're extra. They're running down with the birthday treat bags to my classroom because they wanted to give them to all the kids. If that doesn't say friendship, I don't know what else does. Here's a picture of inside of my classroom. We've got students playing toys. We have a friend who is helping support that art and craft activity. And of course, this is the fun of everything, and it's just a smile show that they've got great relationships. This year, our theme ethic is rainbows. We truly are a rainbow possibility if we're together, and we're working together. So thank you.
Any questions?
Is this still part of the Big Buddies group that goes on? Or is this in addition to Big Buddies? I'm sorry to make you go back.
No, there it is. It's really just something that I do in my classroom. It wasn't the buddies or anything like that. Mrs. Kane has been a teacher that I use often for that inclusion. He's typically, like, two years ago, the students were just following the kids going to their specials. And as I mentioned, like, this year, we really noticed that specials is really difficult for the kids. So Mrs. Kane has been on board and is like, okay, what can we do? And so every Wednesday right now, we do 15 minutes they come. And then we're working on our, we have something called a pop group, which is our social, emotional, and communication group. And now we're bringing friends in to do that, too. So it's growing, but slowly.
I like it, thank you.
Great, that's great.
All right, with that, we'll move to number eight. Mr. Pavillano was on the phone, so I promised that I would kind of move it all the way through here. So I will throw it to Mr. Almeyer for 8.1.
8.1 is the accounts payable. Just looking for board of approval on the accounts payable reports in the agenda in the packet. No further comments?
Any questions from the committee?
No.
Craddy, you're good?
I'm good.
All right, so we'll move that forward, and then we'll let you keep going.
8.2 is a bus bid, and I'm going to hand that off to Dr. Seer and Ms. Hooper, and I'll jump in as needed.
Thanks, Mr. Almeyer. In front of you, we have a bus bid for four propane buses that have wheelchair lifts. Just wanted to note on this bid, this is kind of a difficult bus to find, the busification we needed, being a 54-passenger. We were also looking for propane. And we had one bidder come back, it's being presented here. So we went back and asked our two primary partners to give us some pricing on diesel. So that's where you see some other considerations here. At the end of the day, the diesel buses are cheaper, but we didn't think it was significant enough. Or as long as we keep our buses and use the maintenance that would come with that, and we're seeing it less with propane and better fuel efficiency with the propane. So Ms. Hooper did quite a bit of research here, diving into this, making sure we had the correct buses for this year. So we're recommending to purchase four 54-passenger propane buses with wheelchair lifts from Central State Bus Sales Incorporated for $644,580. That includes the trade-in to a five-bus.
And we get a grant, I think, or a refund on the propane? Is that correct?
Correct. Through the Illinois Propane Association, we receive approximately $4,000 rebate on each propane bus we receive. Generally, in the past, the difference between a diesel bus and a propane bus really has been anywhere from, you know, $6,000 to $9,000. And so knowing that we have a $4,000 rebate right up front, combined with the less maintenance costs, combined with the approximate $2,000 to $3,000 of annual fuel savings, propane versus diesel, the propanes have been really, really a good addition to the base.
These have a real fair accessibility, which is, is that, do we have other buses with full buses like that?
Yeah, so right now on the lot, we have 16, so we'd be trading in five or, we have a total of 15 going into next year.
Mr. Pavillano, you wanted to jump in, sorry.
Just real quick, the question would be, what's our oldest propane bus right now? I'm just curious, our history so far with the propanes?
Did you hear me, Mr. Pavillano? It was 2021.
Okay, all right, just trying to get an idea.
We went, we went three years. Each year, we purchased, I believe, eight or nine propane buses. Maybe one year, we did 12, I believe. But we're up to 33, plus these coming in, it'll be 37.
How long on these, like, the turn?
Generally, they will last as long as any diesel bus we have, and we generally are keeping them anywhere from 10 to 13 years.
Any other questions? Anybody who's with the rest of the board? Move that forward. 8.3.
8.3, monthly fiscal update. A few things I do want to highlight on the monthly fiscal update. Next month, we will be presenting the budget and the five-year plan as well as, excuse me, the extracurricular committee recommendation in accordance with the contract. I do want to note a few operational efficiencies, and several operational efficiencies, well, they didn't make my memo. And so I'm going to point those out. But a few things to highlight, the finance team is working hard together to do an accounts payable audit. Typically, you would hire somebody from the outside to come in and do that. But with our audit experience and what we've done in the past, we've kind of decided to conquer and divide and start working on that internally. And with an accounts payable audit, we're doing something a little unique that I don't think most auditors do. We've decided to look at our top 50 vendors over the last several years, and we are actually contacting each and every vendor, and we're asking them, well, what do we owe you? But at the same time, do you have any credits on our accounts? Because what vendors do and what they don't do, many vendors do not let you know that they do have credits on their account, and they don't issue credit memos. And in the very short time that we've been doing this, well, we're yielding some pretty good results. So we will keep the board apprised on that. But it's probably good practice to do this every four or five years. I think the last time we really did it was longer than that. We do have a system that prevents us from duplicate payments, but a lot of times, credits on people's accounts, on our vendors' accounts, don't always arise from duplicate payments. They could just be short shipments and things of that nature that get missed when the invoice gets sent. So we're working on that. So that's the finance team. Doug and Mr. Rancasic, with his relationship with ComEd, discovered that while ComEd has grant opportunities, and they have some immediate grant opportunities for electric school bus and charging stations, for which we are eligible with the four electric buses that we previously purchased, as well as the infrastructure and the charging stations that the locals spend that we have provided on these. So working with Doug, we have completed those grant applications, one for the bus and a couple for the chargers, Level 2 and Level 3 chargers. And it's on a first-come, first-served basis. And hopefully, we'll be able to recover some of that out-of-pocket spend that we did have on those four electric buses and charging stations. So that's also very good news. Food Services recently learned of a ISB grant. And this grant, I'm going to pull it up because we took a little field trip today to eventually check it out. This is a local food-for-school cooperative agreement grant. ISB is participating with the USDA's Local Food-for-Schools Cooperative Agreement. The new program will provide, well, provides a lot of money to ISB, that will be reimbursed to eligible schools that purchase local, unprocessed, minimally-processed food in accordance with the LFS requirement, such as leafy green lettuce, right? And so we found one of their local vendors that has been approved by ISB, and it's located in Woodstock. And that company is called Tribe Country Farms, and they create leafy greens, well, with aquaponics. Not hydroponics, but aquaponics. And aquaponics is a combination of hydroponics, water, and fish. And it's a combination of the fish and the nutrients from the water that the fish are in combined, which really makes the lettuce grow kind of crazy. And we got to see all that today, which is actually a really cool little field trip. And we have already been accepted for $29,000 for our district. So we're going to be eating a lot of green lettuce, maybe at the end of this year, going into next year. And this grant should also be available for next year. So that's also a huge win for us, is that will supply our middle schools and high school, definitely with fresh, locally-provided leafy green lettuce. And I have pictures of that, maybe I'll share with you guys later. So that's that one. In the technology side, that team is still working, well, working very hard on operational efficiency. And we are very close to finalizing the Chromebook replacement schedule. So we're modifying that Chromebook replacement schedule a little bit. And in doing so, and looking at the dollars we spend, we should be able to save approximately $200,000 on our Chromebook spend next year as a result of that, by thinking, well, thinking differently. So thanks to Mr. Frameth and the tech team on that run. So just a lot of really good things going on. So I just wanted to update the board on those things, and that would be it for fiscal updates. Any questions?
No questions. None from me.
Okay.
Eight point four?
Eight point four. In front of you, you should have the January 2024 Financial Executive Summary, primarily driven by the timing of revenue recognition and capital projects, 69% of budget. If you do look at the net operating deficit, we're running a $2.7 million deficit, however, still tracking with budget, so that is to be expected based on, again, the timing of revenue recognition and capital projects being front-loaded for the FY '24 budget. With health insurance claims, we had a nice month of $871,000, down from a million and 1.3 million in November and December. So claims have been coming down a little bit. I have not seen the February claims yet, so stay tuned on that, but still trending over budget on health insurance. You know, we talk about that every month, so we'll just continue to look at that. Looking at the dashboard, I do want to highlight a few things. We continue to trend within budget, other than on health insurance, but I do want to point out interest earnings, right, the bottom of the top section, doing very well at 174%. And that's obviously with the economy and interest rates where they are, we're doing, we're benefiting significantly on that line item, so that's good news. The other line item I want you to look at, well, for the month of January, remember this is January, we are at 65% of budget impact and transition fees, but just last week, we received $600,000 from Elgin Quinn. And that would be from Lennar, as well as the new residential homes also going up on Elgin Quinn Road, where the old golf course used to be. And they're still seeing a lot of impact fees coming in. Little background on the check, historically with Elgin Quinn, with impact fees in general, with impact fees in general, whether it's Humbling or Lake in the Hills, they just send us the impact fees that they collect on a monthly, quarterly basis. They send us what is owed to us. Historically, Elgin Quinn, well, they do not. They say, you have to send me a letter requesting it. And so each and every year, we send a letter. And so we sent our letter, and then I was quite surprised that it was $600,000. So I had a nice little conversation with their new CFO, and I said, you don't want to do this anymore. Can you just send us our money on a monthly basis? And they're going to. So that's good news. So we'll have a little better number coming in on a monthly basis, at least from Elgin Quinn, and she said it looks like currently, you know, it is the spring and they're starting to sell a lot more homes, but they currently have another $40,000 to send us next month. So we will continue to see impact fees come in, which is very beneficial for our district and our students. So that's good news. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the January executive summary.
Good to see the healthcare, at least for one month, be under.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the only other thing is, your salaries and benefits, other than insurance, are like dead on your budget. And you divide that by seven, multiply it times 12, you're within a few bucks of that budget. So you're, the biggest line item in our budget is really looking to be right on, so that's great.
Any questions from the rest of the board? All right, we will move on. I think eight point five. Skip them.
No, eight point five. I was just pausing because I didn't know if you wanted me to take on that. This is for the revenue contracts, seeking approval to have the board approve. We have two revenue contracts, one from Adrenaline Fundraising and one from Snap Raise. We've seen both of these before, and they seem like very, very good fundraising opportunities for boys lacrosse and high school. So that will ask for the board's approval.
Issues on my side.
I'm good.
That forward, unless there's any other questions? All right, number eight point six, the audit engagement letter.
Thank you very much. This, well, is somewhat standard operating procedures, because every two or three years, we bring back an audit engagement letter. And we've been with Evans-Marshall &amp; Pease, we've been very happy with this auditor, well, as long as I've been here, I think almost 15, 16 years. And they came in a long time ago and got to know the partners very well, the current partner, and they've always done a really good job for us and worked with us very well, did a good job auditing, I can tell you that, because, well, I used to be an auditor. And their fees have always been the same. And I do recall, once upon a time, back in 2011 or '12, they tried to increase our fees, and I kind of looked at them and I said, well, we provide you a thick and tight audit. Like you, we do do a very good job in our finance department to make sure that we're giving them everything they need to make their jobs easier, because most school districts don't have that. But we do, and we did with Debbie, and we do with Jenny as well. And so over the years, they have literally kept our engagement fees flat at $33,000. And the partner came to me this year, and he said, I can no longer keep them flat. And so they increased the fees to $41,000, which is a 24% increase. But doing the math and looking at the last 15 years, if we were to increase those fees on an annual basis, anywhere from two to two and a half percent, we'd be looking at $45,000 to $48,000 currently if they did that. So over the years, we have certainly benefited from them holding our fees flat, but I will also add that talking to a lot of other districts and knowing, and actually speaking with Mr. Quigliano as well, because he's in a public accounting firm, that the fees are extremely reasonable. In fact, the fees at $41,000 are a lot less than a lot of other districts that have smaller budgets than we do. So I still feel that Evans-Marshall &amp; Pease is providing us that discount, if you will, for us doing the things we need to do on our end. And at the same time, they're also going to hold that fee flat for three years. With all of that being said, administration, myself, is making the recommendation that the board approve the Evans-Marshall &amp; Pease Engagement Letter, beginning with this year's audit, June 30th of 2024. Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I can just tell you from my perspective, we, yeah, it's been the bargain of the century in the world of audit fees from these guys for years. I cannot believe they've held the line for as long as they did. I mean, fees in my industry on audits have been increasing more at like 5% a year in the last three or four years. So I look at this as a still very reasonable proposal, and the fact that they'll hold the line for another couple of years after this is pretty nice, too, because like you said, the rates have been going up significantly in our profession, so I'm perfectly fine with it.
Like the fact that they're holding the line as well? I don't like the increases, but the fact that they're going to hold it for three years probably makes it reasonable.
Yep.
Any other questions? After that, we'll move that one forward, and we'll move to eight point seven. This one, I'm going to hand off to Ms. Mobergh.
No. Thanks.
Thanks.
Coming right back. This is another just standard annual procedure. This is the IHSA renewal for next school year, '24, '25 school year, and we are just asking that we are able to continue to renew that partnership and continue to be recognized by ISBE and the board. We follow the rules and bylaws and terms and conditions of doing that. To note, there would not be a membership fee for next year. During the pandemic, there was a graduated year-by-year proposal that was put forward because of somewhat loss during that time when some of our state series things were not going on. Based on that, that next year, they had come back, and as things were able to get back into their normal routine and procedures, they relooked at that, based on that, the last two, and again this year, there is not that annual renewal fee. I would assume that we would go back to a regular next year, but we'll wait and see what happens there. And so it's just kind of as a state series of things that we participate in, we pay, but not that annual fee with that piece. So this would be just, again, asking that we move this forward for that renewal for next school year. And one that we just saw, IE SA, comes around the same time. It's always this month, I was able to note that they put up for next year the fees for all of the activities and athletics for IE SA. It came posted with all of those increases or staying flat after the board packet was put together. So I would like to, next week, put that in for an action item, but again, it's another annual standard procedure. So if the board is okay that we would put both of those forward, one would be in consent, and the other would be an action item. Any questions?
None for me.
Thank you.
And we'll move to number eight point eight, the Food Service Co-op. I think Mr. Reed, you're going to come up and present, and Mr. Almeyer will play second chair.
Well, we could do that if you want. This is really kind of a standard operating procedure to have a co-op approved, but Mr. Reed could provide some background for sure. He likes the microphone.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for the opportunity. So real quick, I'd just like to give you a brief example. You received a folder that had three documents, one being a letter of explanation, one being bylaws of the organization, and the third being a joint agreement contract. With that being said, I'd just like to explain that through the co-op, which is a Northern Illinois, started at that 30 years ago, purchasing co-op for about four or so districts, and that has now grown into 74 member districts, and it's pretty much all over the state of Illinois, down past Central Illinois, a little further. What this allows us to do is be able to use everybody's buying power, which recently has equated to about $28 million for the food products that we go out and bid for. So that's substantially more buying power than if we were doing it on our own. So that's the benefit of using a co-op of this nature. The reason that the co-op is doing this new move is in efforts to keep our cooperative sustainable in many years to come, we've decided to change our governance structure. For the past 28 years, the Oak Park River Forest High School District has been our governing body, and that they've always done the bid recommendations, but on July the first, 2024, the co-op will be doing its own governing board. And the way that that is structured is through bylaws and joint agreement if we decide to stay in it. And with being in it, I would just like to tell you that there is a lot of benefits for that. There's a lot of work that goes into every three years going out for bid with major distributor companies and the manufacturers. We not only did who's going to deliver me the food, we'll go out to bid on all the manufacturers, keep a lot of volume to be able to get the prices that allow us to keep our venues at a price that our students and families can afford to be able to enjoy that. Really an important part of my department, and I think an important part of our district, I would like to recommend that the board refuse that joint agreement contract and would sign that at the next board meeting, allowing us to still continue to take part in that organization. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks for adding, it's a good program, looking at it. I do have a question, just because we had a little conversation on the side. Is it, so it's the Food Service Co-op, do they ever look into appliances and other things, getting deals for the kitchens and anything like that? Do they ever expand of that?
Great question. They don't particularly do that. A lot of times, when you get into those, some kitchens are really designed different than others, and so that's hard to go out to bid for something when you're really broad bid. You really need to get that down to certain specs on every seat in the equipment in order to really have a manufacturer give you a price that they know what you want, right? Some people might enjoy buying a electric steamer, some might want to stay with gas, some might want double steamers, and some might want single steamers. So it really, those type things isn't something that mass districts can say, we're all going to use this one steamer moving forward, and that's kind of what a program for going out to a big bid like that would need. Is that, I'll say it's your.
No, there's just a lot of money there on the appliance side.
Yeah.
Well, there's several, there's several co-ops that are out there that exist for various purposes. They're there for Chromebooks, they're there for all sorts of technology items. Kitchen supplies is a different one. I'm familiar with tips and have used them several times for different things. So there's numerous co-ops that are out there for different purposes with very specific items that they address.
Yeah, and there's an HP company that's like a national country company, that they also do a lot of equipment, as well as food type of deals, so that's, since Mark and I continue to look at how can we be more responsible, that kind of is. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. That, we'll move that forward. Number nine, the Human Resources Committee, Mr. Craig.
All right. Thank you very much. Nine point one, non-union pay rates, FY '25. Dr. Zier.
Listen, turning to the seating board, our recommendations by administration for pay increases for the folks who aren't in the union, to our at-will employees, so have a few categories here to discuss real quick and just give a little bit of background on. First of all, our OTs and PTs. A few years ago, what we did, we started to mirror the HEA contract with this group, and then tried work on the side with their team leader to follow language. So that recommendation, you know, moving forward, we would, for those 15 folks, mirror the HEA contract, and as we were doing the HEA contract, Mr. Almeyer and myself were budgeting for this on the side, so we were aware of the folks who do an increase. Any employees that are classified as at-will will recommend a 4.25% increase. Our elementary supervisors, lunch resub supervisors, they would fall under that at-will category, but we also like to keep that base rate moving. So making a recommendation to move that base rate. Same thing with our mobile tech, recommendation to move that base rate. And then our subs, I want to speak to that a little bit. This has been a huge recovery over the past three years. We actually took the sub posting down the other day for the first time and said, we're good to get through this year. We'll go back at it again for next year, but we were getting quite a few applicants where we were able to start to bring our educational questions back. So if you went back three years when we were battling it, at about 50 subs on the rolls. So we weren't getting filled, it was a struggle. We're back up to 120 now, so we're past 2020 numbers where we were about around 100. So it was interesting, the first day we took it down, we had two people come in, the front door wanted a sub, so that, we'll still have you apply, maybe come to the front door and start knocking, but we're trying to get that adjusted here. So we've been very competitive in subpay across the district, or across the area. Outsourcing has become a big thing in subs. So there's Kelly is a company out there that outsources. Edgy Staff is down at District 300. They can provide a few more benefits that we can't. They don't pay into TRS, so that's one thing, our subs pay their TRS out of their check. They qualify for benefits when they're with organizations like that, and they drop gifts at our door, and we just keep going. We like to have it in-house, we like to have the personal touch with the subcoordinator out of our office, and Ms. Boston has taken over onboarding the subs this year, so her and Ms. Elder interview all of those subs before they come in. And so we like to, we're a large district, but we like to have that personal touch. We don't want to outsource something like that to where we kind of lose control over it. So it was interesting, one of our neighboring districts out to the west, they outsourced, and it failed miserably, and now they're having a tough time bringing it back in-house. It upset those folks, and they went to another district. So just to give you an idea, this week, and this is teacher fill rate, 95% on Monday, 89% Tuesday, 95% Wednesday, 92% Thursday. We're trending for 89% tomorrow. Come on, high school. I mean, that's a few call-ins there that are percentage, you have the same thing, but so we've been in that 90% range, and some of the districts are reaching out to us that are outsourcing, saying, you don't know if this is working for us. So we're staying pretty competitive with that sub increase, and we'd like to continue to do that. It's important for us to have high-quality subs, you know, when our teachers meet the mess, or when Elvis comes for them, or their family members. So we've had a real good turnaround in that sub world this year, so I wanted to speak to that component there. So we're making a recommendation of these pay increases to be moved forward at the next board meeting.
Questions from the committee? Rest of the board?
I mean, I think Dr. Zier answered the question I had about the competitive around locally, and it sounds like we are. Especially, we're pulling it down.
Yeah, and also, and we'll, we'll put it right back up in July, but something to say about that, too. What's interesting about the sub war, what happened, we'll prove, when you all approve this, if you do approve this, man, get out in front of myself. So I'll start getting calls from HR, so what are your sub rates again? And so everyone starts sharing, well, then everyone starts kicking board acting. So if you really want to know what a true sub rate is, you got to dig through the board report. So we're competitive, but that's also something someone can bring to a board meeting, and we saw that a lot in 2021. It was tough to keep track of, you know, comparables around here, because everyone was just bringing up. was just bringing up dates to increase those rates. So, we're seeing that level up here.
Yeah, we'll move that forward. Next up, number 10, Buildings and Grounds, and Mr. Troy.
Yep, good evening, everyone. Item 10 dot 1, O and M updates. Mr. Rinkasik, anything to highlight on this month?
Yes. Continue to pursue contractors to close out last year's projects, and every week now I'm calling and talking with and with that, and forbidden closer, but they're not there. I review the fiscal impact with Mr. Allmeyer, and we'll keep you track of that. Other than that, the content besides the attached, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to go to attachments, there's quite a bit here. Quite a bit, quite a bit of data here, that's better. The first item I want to bring, or turn your attention is the carbon-free assessment. I wrote a summary, there's a large, voluminous number of pages that Connet's consultants provided to us with the results, the work product that they had. The main reason they did this was to understand the financial burden of a complete electrification of public school facilities. The site, our value there was that they identified items that we should consider. Some valid and some not. If you read the content in DDL, you can find some things that the college told we didn't invest enough time, that probably didn't really understand where we are, what we've gotten, the impact of the requirements to change the operation of something to do what they're suggesting be done, and the cost was exactly right. But it's mind-blowing, when you look at the car, that the electrification of our entire school district operation, I mean, may have included mostly, completely, with some hypothetical numbers from their experience, and to electrify everything in the school district so it's not a carbon-consuming, you know, carbon emitting directly, you know, would be powered from electric utility, which has its own environmental impacts, a statement published every year, by the way. But it'd be $160 million plus. Simple payback would be 126 years. And then, and the annual benefit of the reduction, the environmental impact, the reduction in greenhouse gas, or something like, they like to talk in metric tons, but I like to talk in US tons, it's more valuable for me. 20, I'm sorry, US pounds, it's 22 million pounds of carbon, but that's still kind of outrageous, and they recognize that, the consultants say that, yeah, we recognize that these are the numbers coming back, but, you know, people took, just put the charge together on any data. If you dive deeper into the report, you'll see some items marked and highlighted in yellow. Those are items that we're either working on, like the chiller at Chesapeake, it's in the midst of the long order to get it even delivered, is the process, so there was a couple ideas there about changing the chill water pump, and put some reset, water reset, temperature reset controls in there. Sort of evaluating if it's like that, but, yeah, for the most part, it didn't seem to be that valuable. The other thing I want to bring up is we did complete the facility survey, and that's the administration was quick to charge as a strategic goal, and there was a pretty good turnout. This is in there, that about 38% of the staff members, everybody was invited to fill this out, and about 38% responded. It's a pretty good sampling of the classroom space, with 61% of the people that responded for the classroom, which is, you know, more direct impact to our students, which is, I 'm sure the feedback we're hoping to see. We're taking this show on the road, we're evaluating the comments, reviewing them in detail with all the stakeholders, the school district leadership teams, the school building administration teams. And there's a few out there that things we caught, that people made a comment that we are specifically going after, wondering why, you know, that wasn't brought to our attention sooner. Sort of, just highlight a couple of sort of specific high-level discussion on a couple of things. One is housekeeping. There were a lot of comments, we think our room should be cleaned every night. And the reality is, back in 2009, I got a phone call, I think Mark was, they were in line along with our former superintendent, that said that we have some budget challenges right now, and we need to find some places to see some notable savings, and one place we want to do that is to reduce housekeeping, 40% budget dollars. We went through an exercise that took quite some time, I don't want to go into all the details, but we had tested out models of it, and they gave us the time to do that, which was very nice, and we came back and decided we need to cut 35%, and we can have something fairly functional. We included staff in the conversation, it was very good. We interviewed staff before the test at Chesapeake High School, we interviewed them during it, we invited them to come to meetings after school, we invited them at the end, and then we reported back to leadership. But right now, in today's dollars, we talked to our present contractor, what would it cost? You know, at high level, just take a quick look, which we'd have to negotiate down, roll up our sleeves and get the calculators out and so forth, but it's in round numbers, it's about 19 FTE and a million dollars a year. That's a big challenge. Another item on the list was people said that they were, you know, concerned about the variance in temperature in the facilities, a lot of comments on that. And the reality is, we did some notable conservation measures back in 2010, 11, and that right now, in today's dollars, probably saves about $400,000 a year. And what we did is we set, well, besides a lot of other things, one thing we did was we set a standard for temperatures that we would maintain this temperature in the occupied spaces between 70 and 76 degrees. We didn't just blindly do that, pick numbers out of the air, we investigated what the ASHRAE standards were for temperatures in spaces, and as I understand it, that's still found to be reasonable. But when I say maintain between 70 and 76, you could be a room, in a room with a very limited number of occupants, with no windows. Our middle schools have great examples of that, in the middle of core of the building, even on the first floor, and, you know, you might be floating in the lower temperature, but if you're in an outside room highly occupied, you're going to be maintaining at the higher level of our standard, possibly. When you're an individual walking around in the building from one of those rooms to one of these rooms, and you note that difference, it's going to be recognizable for you, but that was one of the parts of that comment. The other one was humidity control, and humidity control is something I highly don't recommend. I worked in a college where it was abandoned many, many years ago, because it was the county repository for historical documents. And what was discovered was that it was outrageously high maintenance, and for us to even think about installing something like that would be really big dollars. And lastly, it's very risky, if there are maintenance issues with it, it can cause problems for the occupant there significantly. So, it's a very, highly, high-maintenance item if you're going to be successful, it's a dangerous. Lastly, not lastly, well, second to last, there are comments about carpet replacement. My carpet's very old, needs to be replaced. We had a program start a number of years ago, and we got a lot of the oldest done, and it was, it's been built on life cycle. We're going to talk about in a few minutes, maybe, the next step in that life cycle, the next oldest. And we're hearing a lot from the people in the buildings that were built in the 2004, '05 era, but we're still working in the ones that were built in 2000, 2002, actually, 2001, now. So, we've got a little ways to go to get there. Lastly, I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of what about the data point on page 18 of the report, and how well the people responded, that felt that we were doing, being responsive to their request for maintenance. We're proud of that. And our team, we've got a great team, I keep saying that, really good group of guys, and girls. So, that's, that's all in the facility survey. Oh, I forgot to mention another thing. We've gathered by participation in the Strategic Energy Management Cohort, and in a big incentive for, from Connet's for energy efficiency with our, our recent change of all the large DX cooling condensers at Marlboro Middle School, those checks that are, some of that check data is in here for you to look at, we gathered $109,000. So, that was nice. Last thing that did make the report is, we got this nice little plaque from the Strategic Energy Management Cohort for five-year alumni participation. And that's it, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Anybody have any questions from the committee or the board? So, from that survey that you did, it sounds like you had a couple surprises that were pleasant, and a couple ones that you didn't know about, but that, it unveiled itself, or information was presented that you weren't aware of before?
It's come to my attention that it's, there probably needs to be a general, you know, awareness of how we operate, and how we request services, because apparently not everybody's got the message. You know, we have, we have the software, work order software, everyone that has ICNET has access, it's right on the front page, and click a button, you go in and, and request service on an issue. We've talked, we're talking to some of our staff to be aware of these kind of things when you're walking around the building, checking them out, and, you know, doing the opening up, or, you know, condition assessments that they do on a regular basis for us, but it just seemed, it would seem that there are some folks that unfortunately outlets some things faster, and, you know, we're bringing those to our attention as soon as we like.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for the report. Again, any questions from the board or the committee? All right, we'll go ahead and move ahead then. Sorry, Tony?
I said, no, I'm good.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item, Consolidated Flooring Contract. What do we need to know about this one?
This was, this is an investment for the, what we considered in preserving the facilities, was on the capital projects list that was event on August 3rd. It was listed as an FY '25 project, and it's just that we, I talked to Mark, and these kind of projects that take place in the summer, actually, we don't see the first end until July anyway, because services don't start. Well, this one, we might sneak a couple days in May, and because of the end of the school year, but we really won't see a bill till July. I talked to the contractor about this. We've had some scary moments when we bid this thing, this sort of service before, with people that, for example, a bidder actually does not do the work of anybody in his own staff, he's out there just throwing a number, and then subcontracting to someone who knows who, and workmanship is a really big deal for me, because it diminishes the life cycle and just looks ugly, and costs everything else, or et cetera, with floor finishes, so I embrace the idea of cooperative purchasing, and I've heard a lot of good things internally from some of our members of the district here, and I've checked with other contractors, and I found this company to have a really good reputation of doing business for like up to six years, and then be the company they go go to for doing repairs, that they trust for other contractors, workmanship and things, so really, really good references that I got from the districts all around the Scottland area. And I think I learned that they also have a humongous presence in the commercial market as well, not just the public sector, of doing this kind of work, and that is consolidated flooring. So, we, we had a discussion with them about what our expectation was for cooperative purchase for contract structure, and what you have before you is just that, it's, it's a proposal that would complete the replacement of all the original carpet in Chesapeake and LeGe. Chesapeake and LeGe opened in 2000. I was hired in 2002, and the first week I was hired, I was told we need to have an addition done on each building by next year, and we didn't even have a design. We got it done, and that's part of this as well. Now, you must know that some years ago, before we suspended the floor finish replacement program, we had done one wing of each of those schools, a 300 wing of LeGe and a 400 wing of Chesapeake. In the meantime, between then and then, we took a pause because other things came up, like we'd like to have roofs that don't leak, and have some major catastrophic problems there. We had a lot of parking lot issues, and some other investments to make, so we slowed down, but as I talked about capital projects, we're coming out of a cycle now where those bigger ticket items are pinging out of the way on the first, it may be some more way the room, if the board chooses to continue to go forward with this, this type of work, which I highly recommend. Now, the budget was $800,000, and the reason it was 800 is because back in the, when I did the takeoff years ago and built the life cycle, I was looking at the whole, part of both of those rooms and those spaces, and of course, since that time, a little project has come up the meantime, like a number of years ago, enhancements to libraries were done, there were little, they called pot rooms, built and things, and floor finish was replaced at that time. The main offices got an update, and those were replaced, things like that, some other little spot needs. So, the amount of square footage was reduced. So, after the day we walked the facility, and they went to work on their numbers, I went back to the office, did the inventory on the new tank, and I did my numbers, based on the experience of the last bid, and put like 2.5% inflation on since the last time we did it, and the low bidder's price, and lo and behold, the number that is presented here is about $100,000 less than the number I had come up with. So, it's a really solid number, it's a cooperative contract purchase number, and so I recommend that the board consider this proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, mine isn't necessarily about this specific item, but I'm wondering, are there other flooring issues that we're going to be replacing in a similar fashion at other schools, or is this just unique to these, these two buildings?
There are a couple of other needs I'm aware of, and I know some of the people in the room are aware of it from discussions I had with them. One is that there are floor rooms left at McCaven, where we hadn't gone in and replaced the original architect insisted on putting little inserts of VCT in the classrooms, where we transitioned from carpet to the regular tile floor, and the transition strips that were installed are like in some very bad areas, like where the teacher's desk and chair roll right around it all the time, and the strip pops loose, and then it's a tripping hazard and things like that. And there's a strong desire to get that, get that replaced, and we started a discussion analyzing, do we just fill in the area? Well, the carpet that is in there is, I wasn't part of the interior decorating team that did that, but I would never have picked that color for a lot of my carpet, but that aside, that carpet, that color isn't even available to just build where the tile is and match it up, pretend to match it up, because you're not going to match it up as, because of the age. And we're looking at versus just replace those rooms now as a part of their life cycle that's coming in a few years. But we wanted to first get this off our plate, and, you know, learn, and learn about this company, and I'm comfortable with how they're playing the game here, so to speak, and the degree, all our terms and conditions for construction, and things that we assess. So, you know, if this goes forward, I would go back, there's a little extra room now financially in that FY '25 budget, to consider that. There's one other place that's been brought to our attention, and that is at Heinemann, we have not extended the carpet in the, inside door one in the main hall, further into the core of the facility, nor at door 11. We did this at Marlboro, Marlboro has a much bigger population, and what we learned over the years is, the amount of traffic that comes in, as the old architect calls it, the street, that big grand main hallway, the number of footprints, it takes a lot of steps on a, what I call, we call a walk-off carpet. A carpet that's not like regular carpet in a room, it's more aggressive, and we all have to understand, it's expected light is not the same as what's in a regular room it's left, because it gets a lot more traffic, but so it's built a little sturdier as well. But we should probably consider bringing that in, because the traffic what's been tracking in, when it tracks in farther, especially in the winter when there's moisture on people's feet, it, that moisture on that tile floor can be slippery. We can, we've decided that in Marlboro, we can only go so far, like to the stairwells, to get people to the stairwells, students to stairwells and staff, to get to the second floor, but we can't go more all the way down the hallway, because we've got care, care of food service in there, and carpet and food service isn't a great idea. I've lived in a college, and it's a disaster. But that is out for the park.
Yeah, I was just curious on a bigger scale, so it's not, again, it's not specific to this particular item.
No, there, I mean, you know, I would, you know, I, we will have another, I'll be here for the next life cycle report, I don't know if I'll build it, but maybe Kevin will, I think, but I know there'll be something on there for that, like a life cycle we built for the next tenure future, I'm sure, that continues with that rule.
Okay. Anyway, getting back to this one, any questions from the committee about this? Any objections with moving this forward then?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move this ahead. That'll close out Building and Grounds for the evening, and let's light up this next.
Thanks, Mr. Troy. One question, Mr. Rinkasik, was there just one bid for this, or were there multiple bids?
This is a cooperative purchase agreement.
Okay.
And I talked about all the exercises, checking the numbers on purpose, because I want to still check, do my due diligence, to make sure that that number is a reasonable number, and the co-op is put to charge in part of this process, to go back and look at the contractors' liver numbers, to make sure those unit prices match the cooperative network price.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number 11, Legislation and Policy Committee, just a couple of updates here on this, and we get these kind of updates from the IASB on here, and there's a, there's a couple of legislation things that I think we should highlight here. One is... One is HB 3286, teacher manufacturing externship. That sounds like something interesting that we need some support around here that allows, it's associated with the Illinois Manufacturing Association and I know that's something we're trying to drive a bit more as people choose more kind of technical. And then one with that as well is the CTE Teacher Shortage Initiative, which is HB 3287. I think these are good ones to highlight to allow us to bring in CTE tech teachers a little bit easier. So I think those are both pretty good. And then one that I'm watching personally a little bit here is SB 3166, which is the Illinois School Student Records Act change. This would drive quite a bit more information into the student's permanent record. Again, this is not out of committee yet, but this is something that would drive a lot of work for the district as well as I'm not sure what it would gain from tracking all the reports, the psychological evaluations, including information on intelligence and personality, academic information obtained through test administration. So just highlighting that. And then the next thing is, we did have our third rendition of the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee that was right over the here in Conley a few weeks ago. It was pretty well attended. We had a discussion around vaping specifically and then on behavior. All the others who were there, take any comments if they wish, but I thought the engagement and the discussions around vaping and the presentation that was done by the team from the high school, including Dr. Phelan, was, I thought it was very informative and I thought it was a really kind of good discussion. Phil has any other comments around that? The next one, we're going to actually put it together and we're going to start seeing some potential policy or practice changes out of that. So that'll be, that's one, the whole purpose of it, it comes together. So I'm looking forward to that.
Thanks for the legislation. There's a number of things, it's quite a busy time for them right now, that we're kind of keeping our eyes on. You mentioned a few there. One that we've talked a little bit about here in our meetings and I know that Mrs. Barr has part of that as a thought, as part of our communications update, and obviously it would be something directed from the board, is that there is legislation being developed around the student ambassador of being on a school board. And we've had conversations, we've seen boards that have done that and bringing that student's voice there. A piece with the legislation that's being written right now would support a lot of the things that are going out there where the student or students that would be an ambassador to the school board would not be a voting member and all of those things. But the piece that quite a few of us are watching right now on that is that as that ambassador, the way that it is being written right now is that they would be allowed in closed session and there would be some concerns about that based on some of the conversations and whatnot. And so I know that, again, these things are, have not been moved forward and whatnot, but various bills and legislation that we'll watch very closely on and will bring forward as we learn more about them. So you get a lot from IASB, we're getting them from IASA and Mark, I think you get the same ones from IAS, both a lot of perspectives having the same kinds of information coming from a variety of different organizations.
We're definitely in support of the student on the board.
Yes.
I think the board, I'll speak for myself at least. But the closed session thing is a little bit, I don't know what I'm, you know, the topic, but I discussed there. So with that, no other items on number 11. I will move to number 12, community relations committee. Ms. Rappaport.
Thank you. Ms. Barr, I'd love to hear your report you have for us. Go right ahead.
Happy to bring a discussion back to you about communications where we kind of started the year and this is as we're nearing the end of it. Just wanted to kind of provide you with an update on some things that we've done this year, some research that's been done so that since I knew in my role, in my role, will really help us guide future efforts in the communications department. So I want to remind everybody about the importance of school communication. So the goal is to provide clear, transparent communication with all stakeholders to build support, understanding and trust in our schools and to show our community the value of that investment. So earlier this year, I did a fall communication survey to two different groups. One was to our parents and our families and one was to our principals and our administrative assistants who use all of our communication tools. So up here, you're going to see the response rate. So we received 447 responses from the parent survey, which is about 8.6% of our families. We would have liked a greater number than that, but that is what we got. And the principal admin assistance survey, we got 20 responses and that was about 36% of those who were, who were surveyed. So I'm going to share with you some of the highlights from that survey and really I'm going to dive into the communication tools because that's really the first thing, one of the important things I wanted to assess. So when we looked at, Swiftreach is our mass notification system. So when a parent gets an email, a text and a phone call, that's all coming out of Swiftreach. Swiftreach is a communications platform that's embedded within Power School, so it draws its data from that. So when we asked parents, you know, how they feel about what they're getting in the way of mass notifications, we had a decent satisfaction rating of 81%. Principals and admin assistants, really were asked more about ease of use and that got 60%. So I think there could be a training component with that, but overall, I think we're holding steady on that. I think there's advantages to the platform we have that is currently embedded within Power School. We have one more year on that contract and I would like to spend next year looking around to make sure it's actually the best tool for us. There are other tools out there that are similar in cost that may be more robust, may be better supported, may include more features that would allow us to create ones, they call it code, create one post everywhere. So I don't think Swift is the most up to date in terms of the technology with that, but it is, it is suffice thing for now. Our newsletters, I was really happy with the statistics that we got here. So we have a newsletter subscription to Smore, which is an online platform. Many of our principals are using it. We use it here at the district for our staff and parent newsletters. And again, our goal with communication is to remain the official source of information about our district, about our schools, and so I was pleased by these numbers. So the newsletter's got a 96% satisfaction rate from our parents and parents also said 85.2% said that they rely on the school newsletter to stay informed about what's happening in the district and in their schools. So those are great numbers. We also asked parents and principals and administrative staff about school websites. And here you're going to see our numbers drop a little bit. So satisfaction rating was 60% by our parents, 59, about the same amount projected that their, to their school website is up to date. And then our numbers dipped a little bit more because people aren't finding what they're looking for. So we've come down to 47%. So we know we have some work to do on the websites. Here's what our principals and admin assistants tend to say. They do feel their website is important, 70%, 50% say that they have received negative feedback about their website. 50% find the website difficult to update, to navigate, and about 40% said they don't have the knowledge, of course, feels needed to update their website. So as I do my look back and kind of the history on this, I think our, and just for those of you who may not know, but when this current website, this is a WordPress platform, which is an open source free platform, was built, I think, in large part by a former communications director who was in this position, who was very smart and also very good technically with HTML code and all sorts of things. And that's, that's what WordPress is to a large extent. Then there were some updates, a different person came in, there were some updates and enhancements to the site and we decided to try three lines, some of that, I think, make it a little more efficient, maybe rely less on code. And also to move it out of our server here, offsite, to a different server, hosting service called WP Engine, which we do pay for. So just a little bit of history there on that. And I would like to just talk a little bit about, just to stop here for a second, talk just a little bit about the website. Because of those numbers that we saw in the survey, because of feedback that I've gotten from others who use the website, a lot of our schools don't even have the capability to manage certain parts of their website because it is technical and it does require some skill and expertise. And so to me, that's a problem. I think there are certain areas of the website that they should have control over, number one being their calendar. So when we did the survey, in case you're interested, knowing where, why do people come to the website, what are they looking for most, the number one thing is the calendar. And the number two thing is watch menus. So that just seems like that's the standard across the board in every school district. But those things are important, those things impact people's daily lives and they, they want that information. Other, other popular areas and reasons they come to the website would be for staff directory, forms, athletics and sports, and then to get to Power School. So just wanted to mention that. I, I think that in order to increase the ratings of our website, we need to allow people to find what they're looking for on the website to navigate easily and then once they get there, to make sure that the content is up to date. Because when we, when it isn't, then people, people know that and they're going to stop coming, right? So it's really important that we, I think that we provide our schools at least with some ability to do some updating on their own. I think they would like that and the communications department would continue to, to support that. And there are different tools that can allow that freedom and flexibility for the schools to do that, but for the communications department to have some oversight and even for the school administrators to have somebody else in their building doing these updates, but for them to have some oversight of that, so it's called content moderation. The value of a website, even though it's something that's been around, around a while and we keep seeing new platforms and communications come out all the time, I just want everyone to understand that it's really our brand. So while there's many different strategies for communication out there, including social media, mass notifications and all of that, especially in social media, it gets noisy. There's a lot of voices. We're competing with a lot of different, a lot of different voices. When people land on our website, we've got their attention. It's just us, right? So it's our opportunity to show who we are and what we do and what, and why we're unique. So my feeling is that we really need to look at an investment in a different platform that's going to be more user friendly, that's going to provide better customer support. And I really feel that that's something important for the district to not rely on somebody who, in this role, who has more of a webmaster type experience. I think this role requires kind of a jack of all trades and being able to do a lot of different things related to communication. So I feel like I'd be setting up the district in a good spot if we did this. So I did some research on my own. I first looked into what are we currently spending on our website? So while this may have started as a free venture, it's not anymore. Okay? So we're spending about $17,000 a year for hosting and for various plugins that this WordPress website requires. So I went out and I paid some website quotes from other vendors and we actually, after doing that, did a couple of demos. I invited the principals to come in and some of their administrative assistants to see what they thought. And their preferred vendor was a company called Final Site and that's my preferred vendor as well. Final Site was founded in 1998, currently serves more than 7,000 school districts in the country and about 295 in Illinois. Final Site has a 96 client, 96% client retention rate and a 98% customer satisfaction score. What are some of the benefits of moving to a new website? I just kind of captured some of them here, but, and have already talked a little bit about this, but improved navigation for site visitors, more user friendly tools for those who are managing the website, a more robust customer support. We really lack in this area. So if, if there's something related to interruption of our service and things like that, I can go to WP Engine for that. That's who, that's who we're paying the money to. But when something isn't working right with code or things like that on our page, they can't help us with that. So there've been numerous times this year where they said, oh, you, you need your web developer. Yeah, I don't, we don't have one of those. So we need to go out and find one. So I think the customer support is important to use of this. Enhanced security, so this is something that these website vendors take on. They're big, they're large, they've got a lot of those controls in place. They also are up to, up to code and up to speed on the accessibility standards through the Office of Civil Rights. They provide quality translation services. All of this is integrated within the site. And then the way it works is that they provide directory integration with whatever student information management service that you have. So with Power School, whatever it is, they work and that's something where we would, I'd be working with technology to make sure that those data files are coming over. And why is that important? Because we also can create a lot more automation than we currently have. So we can have staff directories that are automatically updated through nightly uploads and data files. Also calendars. So these big companies work with companies like Google to, so that we don't have to, you know, so that basically we can sync the calendar that we're used to working on in Google with the website calendar, so there's no double doing. And again, it just, it makes it more likely that things are going to stay up to date. It didn't always used to be that way, but with technology, it's just moving more and more, so more automated. But that's that technology piece of it. And then the other reason is that through communication companies like Final Site, which really started in websites, but has now gotten into a bunch of different arenas, you know, there's just a lot more options. We can do upgrades, you know, after a certain period of time that's a minor cost. We can integrate with other services. So this company in particular has a mass notifications service as well and two-way messaging. They're also pretty progressive and they're into AI. They've got features like Chatbot and different things that I think are important and I think it's important to work with a progressive company, especially when it comes to technology. So I just wanted to bring all of this here because I am going to propose that we do consider going with Final Site as a new website vendor for next year. Just a quick overview of costs. So we're currently spending 17, around $17,000, a little bit more, $17,284 to have our website hosting and a couple of Google plugins included in that. The cost for Final Site over a five-year period of time is $16,800. So that is five-year pricing, but if for some reason we weren't happy with, with Final Site after three years and a 90-day notice, we can get out of that contract. So that's a net gain of $484. There is also a one-time setup fee. So that one-time setup fee is $12,900. That is, would be due if we signed this contract soon, that would be due this year, you know, within 30 days. But we, we have, this can be off budget, this is in my budget with an annual report savings that we have this year by not mailing that out to every household. That savings was $14,666. So we actually have a net gain there as well. So it's something I'd like the board to consider. I'd like to, to have you review the contract and possibly approve the contract as soon as possible. If we do that, we actually would have an incentive that they're offering us of helping us with this migration. So this is, it's a pretty heavy lift. We've got a lot of schools, we've got a lot of pages. And so they will do some of that migration free of charge for us, 500 pages of content migration, which is savings about $5,000 if we have this contract signed, bidding for them. Now I have to, you know, if we don't have a signed by then, we do this in April too, so, you know, everything's negotiable. So I just, I wanted to mention this, I think this is really important for, for moving forward. I really, I feel strongly about that. I came from a district where we worked with Blackboard, which was bought out by Final Site, but it was, it was a fantastic experience. I actually, we actually had people in the schools who thought it was fun to use it. It's easy, it's straightforward, updates are quick and fast. So if we looked at doing this, I would be trying to see if we couldn't get this thing done. What I've been told is we need to allow 14 to 16 weeks to make this happen. So I would like to have this, you know, launched by August. That would be, that would be my goal. So now I want to move on to the communications plan, but I did just want to give you guys kind of that background of some of the research that's been done this year and what I'm thinking as a result of that. So this slide just kind of summarizes some of the communications that we've done this year. And whenever we think about communications, we're thinking about it from all different stakeholders that are important to the school district. So under staff administration, you know, one thing we did this year is we, we set a consistent monthly schedule for a new district newsletter to go out, trying to coordinate messages from, from departments here to avoid so many emails coming to staff, so that staff has one place to look for information. We have, you know, general meetings. We've also, Ms. Lumber, I think has done a really good job of We've also, Ms. Lumber, I think, has done a really good job of bringing in different people to different meetings throughout the year. And that's not to say more meetings, but it's strategically bringing people in so that we all stay on the same page about what's happening within our department. I think that's been super effective. We do that with our directors and our cabinet meetings. And I really like the way that the principal and district meetings are run as well and then being able to have the opportunity to meet with our unions too, with our families. We stay consistent with that monthly district newsletter and then our weekly school newsletters that are going out. And then, that T-TAC group that has been started this year for in-person two-way communication, I think, there's just been fantastic conversations that are going to lead to some really great things. And those face-to-face opportunities are, they're golden because we do a lot on our phones, we do a lot on our computers, and being able to sit and talk and ask questions in a more casual format, I think, has been really effective. Schools are doing the same thing. They're, you know, they call them different things, but they're doing the same thing and allowing parents those opportunities. I think it's wonderful. Students, you know, you've seen some of what we're doing here. I think we're just trying to incorporate more student voice. That student scoop has been really fun. I think that's definitely something we want to hang on to. And then, having a different way to recognize some of our students through the Huntley High Five has been also, I think, a really, really neat way to bring student voice in. Community, man, this is a strong community collaboration situation here in Huntley, and I think it's absolutely fantastic and I feel lucky to be a part of it. This Char-Hart group, you know, is amazing, where Jessica and even myself are meeting with our partners from fire department, village, police department, library park district on a regular basis to talk about things that impact all of us, to share news from our organizations and find ways to collaborate. It's been awesome. I do the same thing with our communications folks, and we plan events and all that kind of stuff. And then, that district newsletter is available to any community member in Huntley, if they want, if they're interested and they're not a parent in the district, they certainly can get on our email list. So, a couple of things that we've done this year, I guess I've mentioned, the streamlined communication, the newsletter schedule. With that district newsletter, we're sending that out to the Deloitte folks as well through their communication channels. I think it's just nice for them to kind of see what's happening on a regular basis with us. And finally, I do want to mention that I think the, we've worked on the transparency situation even with our board meetings, I think promoting those board meetings with FOIA's, I think putting our FOIA's out there, more information about our FOIA process and just the FOIA's themselves, I think has been a really, a really great move towards more transparency. So, this is just a couple of fun facts before we get into future plans here, and I promise I'll keep it short. So, just some additional survey data from parents, just some things that I wanted to know. We had a mobile app in my previous district, I'm just curious, you know, is this something parents are interested in? So, it looks like they may be. So, there's about 80% that said they'd be likely to download or use a mobile app. Asked about podcasts, because that's kind of a big way to communicate right now, and we have 60% of those respondents say that they do listen to podcasts. Facebook continues to be the most popular platform among our families. That one surprised me a little bit. I thought maybe we would have more people on Instagram, but 84% was where we landed with that, followed by 58% saying they were on Instagram. And then, the local news piece is always interesting for me to know too, from communications lens, to make sure that I'm getting, hitting the right news outlets with our news. So, 51% are getting their news from Facebook community groups, which is interesting, followed by Star 105.5 FM, The Northwest Parils, and My Huntley News have pretty similar readership as well. So, I have created just the next couple of slides that will kind of walk you through some ideas I have. And again, these ideas are organized by stakeholder groups. These are ideas for next year, for our future, and I want to process this by saying that the timing is maybe a little bit strange with this because communications ultimately is here to support the goals for the district, those KPIs and all of that stuff that relates to our strategic plan. So, I'm picking this point in time, what I know right now, what I've learned from being here and what I've learned through the survey, to just throw up some ideas that I think make sense. Some of these could change, some of these could be tabled, because I need to see where we're at, what we end up doing for next year with our goals. And then, of course, we'll start a new strategic planning process sometime next year too, but I did just want everybody to see kind of what a strategic communications plan looks like, and it'll look something like this. So, basically, the goals here are our goals for the district. Okay, these aren't specific to communications, but communications works off those goals, and I've created some objectives. So, I've started with our staff group, and I think one of the things we want to focus on is continuing to attract and retain quality talent in the district, staff, educators. So, we want to work on enhancing the district's brand across multiple channels to attract those quality staff here. We also want to continue to prioritize internal communication of staff. They are important to us, they are our key communicators. They're the ones out in our community, talking to people, and they're also the ones that are with our students every day and often dealing with our parents. So, they're our priority for sure when it comes to communication. So, strategies to do that, I can see working with Adam Zare over there and his team, and his team on just continuing to work on our brands, on our branding, and on developing some tools for recruitment. So, you'll see over there in our tactics, one thing that goes along with that is maybe we create a new hype video. We have one, it's something that's older, and you know, we keep that thing up to date and keep that shiny and special. Other things we can do, I think, is to, as we're working with this website, make sure that our iNet Staff Oral is user-friendly, that staff are finding what they need there, not more than what they need, maybe streamlining that a little bit, maybe working on our HR piece, an employment section of our website to have some testimonials and some ideas for visitors about what it's like working here, what is the district, really getting that culture in there. And then, working with our district departments, just like we're doing, to continue to streamline the information going out to staff. We want to, in terms of tactics, continue to use our channels, social media, to highlight the great things our staff is doing. I loved hearing that story tonight about Maggie. So, continuing to work with social media on that and other outlets, and then continuing that consistent communication through our newsletters. For our students, we talked, we touched on this just a little bit, how do we get more student voice? That's so important. I think we've done great strides in that this year, and we've got, we're all about our students, that's why we're here. So, our goals, of course, are listed there, but how do we elevate that student voice? How do we continue to bring that into the important conversations that we're having so that we make informed decisions and affect positive change? So, I think part of that can be done through increasing opportunities for student leadership. And, you know, I added just a couple of tactics and ideas here. Jessica did mention that framework for building out, what that would look like to have a student presence on the board. And also, I think we can better utilize social media with student voice, and there's a variety of ways to do that, and I would like to kind of start with the high school on some of that, work with Dr. Velen on some of that. And he and I discussed a little bit of that, but I'd like to have more of those discussions. And then, also, just on a selfish level, but also I think something students could benefit from is possibly having some student interns here in the communications department, something that would benefit them and could also benefit us and could work in that student voice piece as well. So, for families, there's always lots of opportunities here and work to be done, the goals that are on the left, objectives, I think, through the meetings that we've had at T-TAC and some of those that I've attended at the schools, I think, I think we, and Dr. McRindell and I had this conversation too, I think it's really important that parents understand what our kids are, what their kids are learning and how they're learning it. So, how do we do that, you know? And could we have certain events and opportunities for parents to have maybe some of, you know, what we've done with the board this year with those curriculum workshops or things like that? And so, I know this is something that Learning and Innovation has been talking about, and we don't have that all fleshed out, but I know they're having those same conversations over there. So, would be happy to work with them on that and definitely promote any of those opportunities that would be happening next year. The other thing that I think that we've spent quite a bit of time discussing, you know, within T-TAC with our parents and here at the district is the attendance, the student attendance, and without students here, you know, we're limited in what we can do, and we care. And so, how do we, how do we make parents understand that that's so important and our students? And so, I think the communications department could be really instrumental in coming up with an attendance campaign. And again, that's something that I would work on, not in isolation, but with probably, you know, some of the books you've heard from here, the board meetings from Learning and Innovation on that. And finally, just continuing to work on ways to highlight the district, whether that's through social media. We're going to be launching a West Great and 158 here yet this year, maybe tomorrow. So, I think just continuing to work some of these campaigns and showing all the great, all the great people that work here and all the great things that they're doing for our students would be beneficial, and keep those newsletters coming. And finally, with community, I think we can always do more with helping the community understand what happens in the school district. I'm sure for some of you board members who are new this year, you know, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes, and I think there's always more that we can do to try to help our community and our families understand both our successes and our challenges and how we can all work together to get the job done here. So, I think we continue to identify new and improved platforms for this engagement to keep everybody informed and engaged. I've listed a couple of things. The new website would be an absolute focus for this department and for me. We have talked about doing a video podcast, perhaps with our superintendent, which we think that could be kind of a fun way to engage families. And when you do things like that, you can dig down a little deeper, you know? Some of what goes on in that can really help to dig deep into some of what we do deal with here and help increase understanding of some of our challenges and things that you can't, you can't put that in an email or a newsletter, right? It's just, it's not going to be very effective. And then, lastly, I think that there's more we can do to involve the seniors in our community. I think there's some just neat ways to get them involved, and I just listed one of them here, but just starting there and just asking the high school, hey, what are we doing, you know, with our seniors? We do do some discounts for athletic events. I just want to know if we're promoting that enough? And then, how about, could we, could we work with fine arts and make sure that they're aware of our, all those performances and things like that? And I met with their finance department, Sherley and Novak this weekend, she's super happy and already has these reserves. So, I think that's an area that would be a really fun place to start with that. So, those are ideas that we hope will come to fruition next year, barring maybe some changes. Beyond that, I think, you know, we'll be involved in strategic planning next year, and the communications plan from there will support the things that come out of that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be looking at, you know, Swiss Rechar contract with MOBS next year, so we'll be looking at possibly different platforms for mass notifications and possibly a mobile app. So, questions? Any other viewer comments or...
No, I'm just wondering about that contract with Final Site, if that's something...
Well, I think that, questions first on the presentation and then directions from the board would be, we could put next week as an action item, that contract, it would have to, you'd have time to be able to review that, ask questions, and potentially approve it so that that work could start for those 14 to 16 weeks and a lot of that summer with the migration component. Or would you prefer us putting it on the April Cow so you have a little bit more time to review that? You can always put it on next week as an action item and table that to the October, April Cow. So, really just need direction on that component, but then, any other questions that you might have for the presentation?
I think you did a great job, very thorough and, oh, not many questions because of that for me. I love the mobile app thing because I know that, I go to that a lot, and not the mobile app obviously, but the website on my phone, and that's what everybody's usually on. So, I love that option, it'd be very helpful. Yeah. And I love the fact that we're updating curriculum and having it correct. I know when I looked at a few different things, it wasn't there or under construction. I'm glad that that's the ones I was looking at.
Good. And we'll be more likely to be able to do those things more efficiently, I think, if we have a different setup. The company that, you know, I'm proposing that we work with does have, you know, does have that mobile app, I don't know if I mentioned that or not, so they have that option. I mean, there's a lot of things that they provide. I think we just start with the website and then we can see how that experience is and what else we need.
Weren't you mentioning, I think, when we met about the admin for the school, being able to control their own calendar easier?
Yep. I mean, so essentially with this situation, because of the integration with Google, you know, essentially, they're just going to be keeping track of their calendar, which will be embedded on the website, so it just updates there automatically, which is great. So, not a lot of change for them. You know, with our staff directorates, instead of those being the sort of manual situation now that they can't update, that can be done through the data files that come over at night. That requires our data to be accurate and all that good stuff, but, you know, that, then again, is automation and efficiency, which we just, we don't have that right now. But yes, and you know, and then, you know, training is provided, and I'll be doing some training, and, but I do think it would benefit the school to at least have some, especially their calendars, like that's just, I don't think that's something communications can do for them, that they're going to be happy to have, because that is why people come to the website. And it needs to be up to date and full of as much detail as possible.
Good.
Maybe the lunch menu could just be a scrolling marquee, you know?
There's amazing things that we can do. Any other questions or comments?
To kind of dig in on what Laura was saying, is one of the advantages that you see that we'll be able to, probably the schools will be able to own their own messaging on their site, and what about like teachers? Will they have their own ability to kind of create their own presence if they want? Is that something we're looking to do or not? But I know some teachers do that.
Yeah. Certainly, that's an option. I just don't know if that, that isn't something that I've had any conversations with anyone about, because I know that there are various methods that teachers are using now. It used to be, teacher websites used to be a big deal, and then, all these other more interactive ways to communicate have sort of taken a hold. I don't know, Amy, if you want?
Yeah, at the KPI level, C-SO is generally what most teachers are using. Google Classroom is sometimes used at K-12 level and then School G, which is at LMS. And so, I think we kind of let the teachers choose which of those platforms that fit their needs, as long as they communicate that to staff or to parents being students. And so, there's a little bit of a choice there right now, but we did not look at teacher website classes.
It's, I can tell you it's an option that would be included, it's just more pages. So, once you pay for the site, you've got unlimited pages.
And a district integrated calendar? Everything going on in the district could be seen, because I think that's more, very clearly, all the schools, if you wanted to look at...
Oh, yes, yes, definitely.
And then, what about athletics?
And athletics? Sure. I mean, I think it's all possible, I just have to figure out exactly how it works. I know they actually, Final Site has a built-in athletics platform as well, I don't know too much about that, but as much as we want to put on our calendars, we'll be seen on the website.
I'm not trying to push too much, but I mean, in some ways, I'm going to three different places at times, maybe it would be a little easier.
That could be something we ask about for our school, because that's information is right there on there. Can they integrate and pull that over so that automaticity, instead of having another person have to go, we're going to put it here and here?
Yes. And we want to watch what we're paying for some of those things too, because if they're included for free, it's possible that we can scrap it into this, I don't know, but it'll depend.
Potentially. We just changed that this year, so for families, we're not, I want to say we're not doing it ever next year.
We will not do that next year. Nope, nope, nope. No, we're not.
Dr. Miele, the Miele.
Are all good.
Potentially later.
In general, I like the direction that you're going in with this, so.
So, can you explain a little bit more about how you vetted different website companies to get to the point of making a recommendation?
Sure. Yeah. So, I contacted website founders that I have, that I know of through my organization and just being in the field for a while, and asked lots of questions over the phone and then asked for them to submit a proposal so that I could see what that looks like, what we're getting for the money and all of that. So, one was, you know, there's three different, three different companies. Two of the three were part of a demo. There's another company out there that I think is fantastic, but when I got, when I collected feedback from everybody after the demo, it was Final Site that everybody seemed to really like. The other company is... The other company is app-based, they really started out as an app and have acquired, and this is just general what's happening with communication platforms, they want, they want, everybody wants to be the one-stop shop that offers the website, the app, two-way messaging, mass notifications, all of it in one. And there's some advantages in that, and then I think there could be disadvantages in that. But I think, I think what we need is a quality website, I think that is the most important thing that we need. The app is great, but the app is still going to take you out of it to get to the different places, and I just, I want to be clear about that, because the app doesn't mean that everything is right there. There is no one tool that's going to do that, I wish there was, but that, for that reason, I just, I would like to see us have a great website that looks great on the phone, because it will, you know, and then later decide if we want to add the app, which is a fairly minimal cost.
Mrs. Burt, what you did, taking those survey results, you knew what you were looking for, reached out to a variety of website companies that many school districts use, you have your knowledge on there, and then brought in a group of stakeholders that would be not the...
Not the parents, but the users.
Right, so that not the, not the external users, but the internal users, and went through, so not really a bidding process because of information that I was talking with Mr. Altmaier about with the fallacy and components there, but wanted to have it similar so that those things could be looked at, similar to what you do with textbook adoptions and looking at those kinds of pieces. So it was pretty robust to look at and get feedback, and then go take that feedback and what the sites were able to do based on what we were getting from the feedback there, so.
We also, I was on that team, we also had a, Ms. Murray, to your point, there was a criteria, and we went ahead and did a, we pulled out a survey to give some feedback so she could rate between the three options that we saw, I live with Tricia, and so that was all a part of the process.
Thank you, I appreciate the detail.
Anybody else? On the agenda next week, or would you prefer us wait till April?
To review the contract and then decide by next week?
Or we could table it, or we could table it, right.
Were there any incentives to, of course, they want it signed as soon as possible, but we could push back and still receive whatever you had spoken to them about?
I think so, I think so, I know the rush.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes, I don't want, I don't want you guys to be rushed, whatever you're comfortable with.
April, I...
Doesn't matter to me, I mean, we're going to see it eventually, so if we put it on next week and we table it, I'm fine with that too. I'd rather look at it just to see if it looks good.
Okay, I agree, okay.
Sure, sounds good, thanks.
And also?
All right, thank you, Ms. Murray. Moving on to number 13, Board Education, 13.1 minutes. So there's several minutes here, any comments on the minutes, okay to move forward with those?
Motion?
Nope, I think, we'll just move it ahead to the, go ahead and perform a vote, and then we'll move on to all the comments. Number 14, public comment, I think I see this bar with one public comment. All right, Ms. Croft, floor is yours. Now I'll remind you, depending on the length of your comment here, you may be in the shortest board meeting that I've ever been in.
First, I wanted to extend a huge thank you to Zadita Ciderna for bringing the Special Olympics push to our middle school level. Without her, tonight would not have happened. And thank you to everyone who has been involved in implementation and for the coaches that are giving additional support. Give me a second. Seeing Taylor's classmates and friends become teammates brings me so much happiness, and despite Taylor no longer being able to participate due to her own health challenges, we'll be cheering the Huntley Hurricanes on from the sidelines. The inclusion presentation and reverse inclusion tonight, pulling typical kids in a self-contained classroom is the way that our district should embrace inclusion to its core. This is how we benefit and help all students always. My request is that this concept stay present as the kids move on to their next grades up. Inclusion sometimes faces once our kids are no longer the cute, easygoing kids that people want to be around. We need this to continue in classrooms from third all the way to 12th. Junior buddies is for the middle school, and best buddies is for high school, so that third, fourth, and fifth grade ages get lost in the mix. So she was talking about second grade today, so that's a whole middle range. I'm not saying that those teachers don't do this, I'm just saying that like we need to make sure that that is being done everywhere. Last, I was going to say lastly, but she gave her presentation, so I had the difficult thought. Next Thursday, 3/21 is World Down Syndrome Day. Every year on March 21st, people all around the world come together to celebrate by wearing brightly colored mismatched socks. 3/21 is symbolic because people with Down Syndrome have three copies of their 21st chromosome opposed to the typical two copies on the rest of our chromosomes. I know many teachers will celebrate individually in their classrooms, but I love the district-wide push for the Rock Your Socks movement, so don't be shy and don't forget to rock your socks at the next board meeting of 3/21. I want to add to that social media presentation, though our social media is cluttered and noisy, it is a lot of people's first search option, especially when the district site has more than three clicks to get to anything you're looking for. People's attention span is fleeting, and you have to drive people to your website via social media. A living calendar is a must in this district. Communication is the number one request from parents, students, and staff. We have immensely talented students and alumni that this would probably be right in their wheelhouse, so let's tap into our own community and bring this to our district. If we're aiming to be competitive, then this is where you start. Also, Instagram already has individual student-driven pages, so streamlining some of those efforts would benefit all involved. A list of pages on Instagram, you can scroll and scroll and scroll for the HHS or Huntley, I mean, it is, anything that happens in our district, a student has made a page for it. And lastly, can we add yearbook photos to the directories? Because we don't have any idea what most of these people look like, so having that for teachers or for parents to be able to communicate with someone, I pick Taylor up every day, I don't know who half those people are that are involved and are saying hello to my daughter, and I can't ask her. So having that picture on the website would be greatly helpful, thank you.
Ms. Croft? Good idea. I do want to call out to the staff on the Special Olympics team, the coaches, I know that they, we had a new teacher in the district, I believe, new staff member from the district from Palatine who brought kind of the Special Olympics curriculum, so it's parents who inspired, and then the staff picked it up and ran with it. So outstanding, it was a great start for the meeting, and I appreciate that. And we will move on to, all right, we move on to number 17, adjournment. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:15 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.